Seeing you tonight, and your silence. We have two mayor's awards. We're looking forward to seeing Victor Moore and Robert Morrison. Number two is a public hearing, consideration of an ordinance amending section 100.62D, determination of stormwater utility fee right-of-way of chapter 100, Stormwater Management and Drainage Systems Utility of the City of Burlington Municipal Code. It's going to be the first reading on that.
This ordinance is a modification of the ordinance that we just put in place a couple of months ago. The only change here is a change in the definition of right-of-way, is adding to the definition of right-of-way, public airport runway right-of-way and public airport taxiway right-of-way. That would go along with what's already in there is public highways, roads, alleys, and railroad right-of-way, to be exempt from the stormwater fee. So for the implication of this is a municipal airport would continue to pay a stormwater fee, but it would be on parking, the buildings, areas, and roadways that aren't associated with the taxiways or runways.
You guys, we were all here for that. You guys got any questions? Okay. Number three is consideration of a facility use agreement with Southeast Soccer Academy, CISA, for use of fields at the Burlington Regional Recplex, continued from the September 4th, 2018 city council meeting. Mr. Tisland?
We have an updated version in your packet. We got this to the CISA late last week. They don't have a board meeting until Wednesday, so they haven't formally had time to review it. So I think just with them having a board and our meeting schedule, it just didn't work out for them to be here to have some official comment until their board actually reviews it and sees it. But the changes made were under item three term, being an agreement until June 30 of 2028, so a 10-year agreement with a timeframe on June 30 of 2023 to meet and confer, to negotiate the annual contribution fee for the duration of the term, provided the fee shall not exceed an increase of 25%, which would be $500. So this gives a 10-year term, but then still that review at five years where the fee could be increased based on, I guess, increases on our end or discussion at that point. It's hard to put in an exact amount because we don't have that exact amount, and it changes year to year, but having that discussion. Two other changes in it were under number nine, responsibilities. They have to hold an annual tournament, at least one tournament a year with a minimum of 100 teams and take place over two days. That's kind of conservative, low-end on their monster match tournament in fall. And then did add in under 10 lights, increasing that to $600 in the final five years of their agreement. That would equate essentially to a 2% annual increase, which is conservative on our electric cost over a 10-year timeframe, since it is a longer timeframe. So that'd be $500 more over the 10-year timeframe than what was, if it's just $500, but that would be about a 2% increase annually, just to cover our cost on that. So those are the three items that were changed. Again, their formal board hasn't had a chance to review those and have comments, so they may request to continue at the next meeting until their board actually reviews it and make sure they're comfortable approving it.
I like it. Council?
No questions?
That's what we talked about last time.
Yep.
Okay. Brings us to number four, preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending certain sections of chapter 105, garbage and solid waste, and chapter 106, collection of solid waste of the City of Burlington Municipal Code. Don?
The proposed amended ordinance is the same as what you had last time for the first reading. There were two specific, the majority, the lion's share of the language changes are recognizing that the containers, the carts that are going to be used in the program are city-owned containers, carts, as opposed to the citizen-owned container. The lion's share of the verbiage changes defer to that fact. And then there were two other items that, one is that there's language in 106.06, collection fees pertaining to circumstances if a cart is stolen, replacement, this will be indicated in a resolution. I think there's a resolution in our agenda later on in this meeting to address that, that had not been addressed. And the other issue is the elimination of the language in 106.08, reduced base fee under property tax credit program. Conversations between myself and the city manager and city attorney, we elected that that language can be deleted from the ordinance.
The city attorney would recommend deletion of this as a, it's, there's, from a legal perspective, having a rate classification with, based off of age, income is, doesn't meet legal muster with a public utility, so it shouldn't, it shouldn't be in there. Practically speaking, Stephanie, do you know, we have like 18 customers in our system that are currently using this, so it's not a, it's not a highly-used section, but it is one that isn't legal. So recommendation is to get it out of here while we're making these changes.
I like it. Council?
I had a couple of questions. I think you clarified these, but just for my review, how do the citizens dispose of their old trashcans, or do they use those for leaf pickup, or what do you suggest?
Well, we're continuing to allow them to be used in the leaf program. I voiced my opinion about that, but they are allowed to continue using them for that purpose. They have another purpose, obviously, for storage or whatever, but if they elect to get rid of their current can or cans, they can label them, put a note on there indicating, please dispose of this can, and we'll take them at no charge or anything like that. They can either have their garbage in there, or if they have a second container with garbage and their tag on there with the note on there, we'll just take the whole can and everything and throw it away. Or if they just have an empty can they want to get rid of, they can do that, too. Just put a note on it.
Okay. And then my second question had to do with labeling. They'll have the address on it, so if they are stolen, they will know?
The, no, the carts themselves, every cart has a unique serial number that's across the face of it. I think it's a nine-digit, maybe numerals and letters, but a serial number, and that's recorded and that's specific to that particular property or that particular dwelling unit. They are carts that are owned by the city. People may elect to exchange the cart for a different-sized cart, especially when they move into a new dwelling unit, the cart's not the size they want, they'll be allowed to change that to a different-sized cart. Rather than having addresses written or spray-painted on the carts with permanent markers or indelible markers, we're asking that people, if they wish to put some kind of nomenclature on their cart, that they would go out and get some of those adhesive letters and numbers and stick that on the lid. There's some flat spots on the lid for doing that type of thing, and they can personalize their cart with an adhesive number, sticker, letter, whatever, address.
Good?
Yep. Thank you.
Council?
Thanks, Don.
Thank you, sir. Brings us to number five, motion for final adoption of an ordinance amending ordinance number 3129, being an ordinance creating the D-Wall Plaza PUD Plan Unit Development by making changes to section 3B land use design criteria and section 5, 50-foot buffer park. Mr. Tisland?
This, again, would rezone lot seven of this development, which is on the southeast corner of the D-Wall PUD, to allow for residential use, and then require a buffer park between lot seven and lot six to the west of it. Those are the only two changes. There are some existing requirements for height within the PUD. As discussed, developer contractor is aware of the height restrictions and issues out there and is working on that, Form 7460. And again, this was recommended for approval by the planning commission four to zero.
Sounds good. Council, questions? You guys good?
Good.
Okay. Brings us to number six, resolution awarding contract for the 2018 depot white boxing, continued from the September 4th, 2018 city council meeting. Assistant city manager, Nick McGregor?
This, there's really nothing any new, anything new from last week. The only thing to really note is that next is tomorrow, that we are meeting with the Economic Development Advisory Committee to ask, request for more funds to fund the gap between the amount that we have and the amount that we should, should have prior to award. The other item of note is that we potentially are eligible for an Alliant rebate for the new HVAC system that's in there. I don't know the figure of what that would be, but other than that, I could answer any questions.
Nick, we have all those numbers by next week?
Well, I don't know what numbers.
On the Alliant side?
I should. I sent it in last week, so I should hear sometime this week.
Okay. Council, you good? All right. Number seven is a resolution approving purchase of a fire engine for the Burlington Fire Department.
We used a little different process this time, the HGAC, the Houston-Galveston Area Council, and they basically do the bidding process for us, the competitive bidding process, and then you can go through and find the truck that most mat, closest matches what you need. So we found the 2019 Pierce Enforcer Puck, which is very similar to our 2015 Pierce Arrow XT Puck, and the only difference would be this time, we ended up having to try and meet the budget, the 625,000. We had to downgrade our chassis from the current one, which would, ended up being a $30,000 savings. And then they allow up to 25% for any options that you need to add. We had 6.29% in options, which was some shelving and safety options that we added. And by signing this now, the current bid, build time is eight to 10 months, and they're, if we wait until July, they're unsure how much it's going to go up in price of metal and everything by waiting that much longer, but they would guarantee no payment or delivery until after July 1st of 2019.
Could you introduce yourself and the group that, the selection group, and how you went, what process you went through to?
I'm Captain Sneller. We had about, seven of us that sat down, basically went through the old truck, and there were several things that didn't really work as well as we thought they would, changed some configurations in the cab, shelving, things like that, and then sat down with Dustin from Reliant Fire Apparatus, and they helped, or he helped go through the process with us and whatnot, so.
The figure that he's using in here for the budget is in our capital improvement plan. This is a budgeted item for fiscal year '20, so it's a, it's a year-out purchase. When, when we put together the CIP plan, this was designed to be one that would be part of our next year's bond amount. So we don't have the, we don't have the funds on hand, but the plan would be to be, typically for the next year's projects are doing the borrowing about March as the budget's getting finalized, and we typically, we usually have those funds May to June, depending on when we close on it, and would be available then when we make that purchase in that following year's budget.
Yeah, and I don't think I mentioned the total, 633,000 and change. There is a thing in your packet, some savings, if you did 100% prepayment now, you'd save about 25,000, but Jim said that was not possible, I believe.
It's not budgeted, and we don't have the cash on hand to do it now, so.
Okay. Got to have it. Council? Thank you, Captain. Okay. We're rolling downhill tonight, kids. Number eight, resolution establishing solid waste fees for replacement of lost or stolen carts. Jim or Don?
Yeah, Don mentioned this before, this is part of the, what was written in the resolution, or in the ordinance for a fee. The resolution calls for a replacement fee, I'm going to go off of memory since I'm not pulling it up, $50 for a 35-gallon, 60 for a 65-gallon, and 65?
Yes.
For a 95-gallon. That would be, that's a little over what our current cost was on a bulk bid, but we're dealing with individual bids as we move down the road, and it covers, it's enough to be adequately, an adequate figure to cover our costs, it's not a tremendous amount over. Put in there some language in regards to providing some discretion if a cart were stolen with, with proof of showing that a police report's been filed on it, to give some discretion for waiving that fee. The language in there that I'm proposing is that you allow that for a given property owner for the first time, but not for subsequent. And I guess the only reasoning behind that is if you have somebody who's, who's got a history of having carts show up, that that should be a cost on them. I'm sure that there might be some differences of opinion, and I didn't know exactly how to go on this, but I thought that was something that provided at least an avenue to try to make this something that was fair for the community as a whole.
I'm satisfied. Council?
Is it common that they're stolen, other cities? I mean, is there any record, Don?
I wouldn't anticipate that there'll be a lot stolen.
I hope not.
I think when they're private carts, there's from time to time been stolen, but I think everybody's get one, it should be.
Satisfied?
Yep.
All right, let's move to the consent. Number one is resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. Any issues there? Okay. Number two is a resolution awarding contract for the 2018 replacement of damaged HESCOs flood barriers. Mr. McGregor?
Good evening. This resolution here would authorize the purchase of 200 replacement HESCO barriers. We purchase HESCO barriers and we use them, as you can see right now, actually, we've used them in different ways in the past for different protections, but they are metal frames boxes with fabric on the inside that contains sand, and we use them with a plastic wrap to help fight against the flooding. We, when we demo them, we're unable sometimes, especially when they're stacked too high, to save them all, sometimes they, they snag and rip. We're at the point where we need to reorder HESCO barriers, and that's what this resolution approves.
Do we need 200?
In order to protect all the way down Market Street, should we have a 500-year flood? We do.
How many do we have on hand?
I don't know how many we have right now. We use quite a few with this current protection.
So we need 200 to do everything we need, or we need?
200 is for multiple-time uses. I mean, so should you have a flood event, and then you take it down, and then have a flood event occur after that to be able to, to keep going?
Okay. Is the price the same if we were to order 50? Would it be?
I, I know they're about $350 a pop, so shipping can definitely be a factor into this price here, coming after some of the flooding events that've gone on, not just in our area, but in others. It should, you know, this would be the time to try and secure a purchase.
Is there anything else we use them for? And the reason I'm asking is that obviously, in the next couple of years, we're going to put money into the roof front, we're going to close a lot of that stuff up, so we're not going to need them anymore. I hate to spend $72,000 on something.
Well, and I, and I think this goes to a money question on the rest of the flood wall. So for instance, the north side, we currently have 15 HESCOs across there. In order to complete that project, you're probably looking about approximately $2 million or more to get that permanent wall and temporary wall across that. I would say that that's the next phase of our flood protection, but we're probably still two to three years out on doing that. So in that, for instance, we've set up HESCO barriers three times this year. Abnormal year, maybe, but, you know, anytime it hits 16.5, we're having to put those HESCOs at the north corner of the permanent wall, because if you wait too long, we're never going to be able to get in there and put those HESCOs down. Now, we don't have to go across the whole parking lot, per se, but we're going to have to get those in place. So there's some tighter corridors on that north end that we have to work around the wall, but it's just part of the, part of the thing we have to do.
We bought, last time we bought HESCOs, two years ago, and I think it's about two years ago, when the last time we bought them, as an example. They last for being put up and taken down, they can last three or three, maybe four times, but we've put them up, we've put up what we've put up three times this year.
Correct.
And so, they are something, they're a commodity that we do go through, and we need to have a decent amount on. And even as we finish up with this flood wall, which, I mean, the next two phases are still five years to get through, we're still going to be using HESCO barriers around the depot, as an example.
Correct.
So it's, it's something that we're not going to be getting away from, it's just we're going to be using them in different ways.
There are other products out there that you can use for flood protection, and Jim and I have spoken about the potential of switching. There's something called the muscle wall, it protects up to eight foot. It seems like it's a viable product and something that you can reuse, but in order to, you know, for instance, we have a HESCO square just north of, or just south of the auditorium, the Hawkeye Storm Sewer's there, and there's manholes there, and we have to ring around it any times the river level gets up above 17.5, 18-foot, because the water surcharges up top of the manhole, and it actually seeps out. So I thought that would be a perfect location to do something smaller, but you're still going to have to purchase those. I looked at what those cost. In order to do that, you were talking about $80,000 to $90,000 to ring around that, and that's 250 linear foot of flood wall protection. So anything else that you buy is going to be, is going to be pretty costly. Now, you could reuse those, not to say that some of them won't get damaged over time, but problem is when you fill those up with a yard of sand, wet sand potentially, you know, when you pull them up, and if they sit there for any period of time, it becomes difficult, it's hard on them, so, so that's the problem.
You guys good?
Okay. Thanks, Nick.
Number three, resolution approving an extension to the 2016-2018 interchange of employee agreement between the City of Burlington, Iowa and Burlington Community School District. Okay, for our officer.
This is, this is basically an agreement between us and the Community, Burlington Community School District for the school resource officers, and it's a renewal of the contract from the previous years that they have agreed to. It's pretty much the, the same contract, just extending it out.
Any questions for the chief? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Number four is resolution of support for application to Iowa Economic Development Authority Main Street Iowa Challenge Grant. Where is, there he is. Mr. Freever?
Every year, or most years, Downtown Partners is able to apply for a Main Street Challenge Grant through the Iowa Economic Development Authority. This year, we actually had five proposals for different projects, so the Downtown Partners Board looked at those proposals and picked one to go forward with the formal application to the state. So there are 54 Main Street communities in the state, about $1 million available for these challenge grants, the maximum is $75,000. So not every community applies, and not every community that applies is going to get a grant, but we, one of the requirements of this grant is to get council resolution of support for the project. In this case, it's Tom Wolf's project at 805 Jefferson. His plan is to rehab the first floor commercial space, rehab the second floor space, create a new apartment, and also restore the facade. So we think it's, it's a good kind of three-pronged approach. This does not commit the city to any funding whatsoever, it's just saying, yep, we're on board with it, and of course, as the project goes forward, there, they'll be working with building inspectors.
You guys good?
Good.
Great.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. Number five is resolution approving the application of an Iowa Clean Air Act program for Roosevelt Avenue. Mr. McGregor?
The resolution in front of you would approve the application for its ICAP, or Iowa Clean Air Attainment Act, program. What, what we've applied, or planned on applying for is a fiscal year, 20-year project, the Roosevelt Corridor, and then putting an adaptive system in there. The current traffic control system is owned by the DOT and operated by us. We have Kirkwood to Mason Road coordinated for signals. Sunnyside and Mount Pleasant Street are not connected as part of that coordination corridor. So what this project would do is go in there and put an adaptive system, put in fiber network for the other two intersections and connect them all. And actually, it's kind of good timing coming off of the last couple of days with Kirkwood. You may have noticed Kirkwood goes into flashing red anytime it rains. When it gets really heavy rains, we have a short somewhere in the system, and we can't find it, and in order to find it, you'd have to tear up the whole intersection to try and, something in the conduit is, is wrong. But we could repair that with, with this type of signal. So the, the grant application is an 80/20 match. The planned estimated project would be 1.2 million, 1.28 million dollars. 20% match with us would be paid for by TIF. Snyder and Associates is helping us prepare this application. They're also the same group that did the Highway 61 Coalition Study, so they, they have a lot of the material ready, and they actually are confident that they think the DOT thinks it's a viable enough project that they'll probably kick in another 10% possibly. So I don't want to be overly optimistic right now on the application, but as of right now, I would ask for your support on this application. I think it'd be a massive improvement to that corridor.
This was a budgeted project within our CIP for fiscal year '20, and, and when we did the budget, it was listed with the match coming out of TIF.
Correct.
Sounds good to me. You guys?
I'm good.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mack. Number six is resolution approving right-of-way permit process application in downtown parking fees. Nick?
This resolution would approve something that we're currently already doing as far as a permitting process. My staff has made some updates to the right-of-way permitting. So, so what it entails is anytime work is done in the right-of-way, it should have a right-of-way application. We currently charge no fee for this application. We simply want the application filled out so we, we know and can suggest the work to be done in that area. We are pretty good about getting most patches that are done in our roadway. Most of the time, it's Alliant and Waterworks or ourselves that are replacing patches. But the idea is to, is to understand what's going on in our right-of-way. So some of the changes, if you can see on page two, we've changed some, it wasn't highlighted, but the scaffolding, with the amount of work that's gone on in the downtown, we, we were not, we, the citizens or the people that work on the building, we're not doing a very good job of protecting for pedestrian traffic on the sidewalks. And so we had the sidewalk closures and the scaffolding, scaffolding in there to, to try and help mitigate any sort of issues that could happen with a contractor working above head and allowing pedestrian traffic to cross underneath. The, the largest change, I guess, from the permit is the downtown parking fee structure that you'll see on page three. Because of the time limitations that we have down there and the, the value of the parking downtown, we, we wanted to set up a parking fee structure to charge contractors that are sitting there, whether it's equipment or pickups or something, that way they can, one, avoid getting ticketed by our enforcement, and two, also pay to have that spot to be able to function out of that. So as you can see, $10 per day, $30 per week, and $75 per month. I think in the past, we had kind of a loose system where we charged, you know, $25 per day. This at least gets it into the form, gets council approval to, to move forward with this, so. Other than that, it's just the, the process and the form, and, you know, we, we have the ability to find people if they're, become a habitual problem of not doing the right thing in the right-of-way. You know, my biggest fear is having a brand-new road and then having patches done, and then them not being to code, and then failing, and then we have to go back and spend money to fix that patch, but.
Makes sense to me. I like this a whole lot better. You guys good?
Yep.
Okay. Brings us to Steph. Resolution approving fiscal year 2017-2018 street finance report, road use tax.
Yes, this is an annual report we do. Basically, it's just recapping what's going in and out of our road use tax fund, and also the street projects. So you can see the report, it's a standard DOT report where we report the revenues, the expenses, the debt we pay, that it's attributable to street projects, we list all the streets' equipment. We list all the streets' equipment. And does anybody have any questions? Okay.
Thanks, Steph.
Thank you.
Okay. Number eight is resolution approving transfer of 200,000 of funds for costs associated with the solid waste program cart purchase. James?
I guess me. As we've gone through the implementation of solid waste program, we're coming into, we came into this fiscal year, the solid waste fund has just over 700,000 dollars in it. We're doing a purchase of equipment this year. The carts themselves are, and the, between buying the carts and getting them assembled and delivered is about 500,000. Getting the equip, getting our existing trucks switched over to having the two lifts in the back is about 70,000. And we have a budgeted vehicle this year. If we go with the standard rear loader that we've been doing, our budgeted amount was 198, which is what's, what we're kind of looking at. One of the things Don's even talking about is going to us, at least considering whether we do that or not, fully automated, which would be more like 250 as opposed to the 200. That all being said, given that our revenues are probably going to be about the same as they have been in past years, which is, you know, we're about 1.9 million of revenue. Where we end up cash-wise, if it, if it goes through that way without doing any transfers, we're going to be in the 30 to 50,000 range for cash balance at the end of the year. Our financial policy would say that our funds, our revenue funds, whether it's the storm water or the sewer or the, or the solid waste should have about 15% carryover balance, which in, with a $2 million budget or 1.9 million budget, would equate to about 270,000. And you want to have that kind of, I mean, the reason to have a 15% balance is to make sure that you can cover ebbs and flows that can happen. And it's really important, I think, for this fund as we move into a new program where we're not sure what our numbers are going to be, what this is going to do for changes for our operating equipment needs, our personnel needs in the fund moving forward, to make sure that we have adequate funds in reserve to be able to do it and at least come close to having that 15% set aside that we have as our recommended financial policy.
And the 200,000 gets us pretty close.
It's still a little below it, but it gets us close to it. Thirty thousand definitely doesn't get us close to it.
Right on. Council?
Where's this money coming from?
It's set to come out of the cash that we received on the manor sale.
Are we good?
I'm not. I don't, I don't like the idea of taking that money and moving it to the trash program. Not that amount. I mean, if it's something that we need to address moving forward, just blanketly moving money that we can use and try and get a return on, moving it to solid waste, just to make sure that we've got the buffer. I'd rather address those issues as they come along. So if at the end of the day, we need, if we move 50 or 75,000 dollars over in order to, to create a better buffer than where we're going to be in the 50,000, that, that's fine, but moving the whole 200 over, I'd rather tackle those as they come along. So if we see an expense or if we see an issue, then we take a little piece and move it over. I don't just want to blanketly move the whole 200,000 over. I'd rather keep that money there because we've talked about parking lots, we've talked about numerous things with those funds. Once we've moved it over, then we lose the ability to use that money to create a better return for the city, whether it's Rexplex projects or it's other investment projects, whatever. I just feel like I'm okay with creating a better buffer, but 200,000 to me is a bigger buffer than I think we need to create. And then over time, as that project moves or as that fund moves forward, we will theoretically continue to build up a balance that falls within the guidelines that we've created.
I like the, I like you running the 15% if we can, and I'd rather just be over and done with it and just be covered. I'm fine.
Yeah, I'll tell you where I'm at on this, Matt, is, you know, we have our city manager here for a reason. He's very well-versed. He's brought us light years from where we were a few years ago. I trust his judgment. If that's his recommendation, that's...
I'm not arguing.
I know, I know. I know. I'm just, I'm just saying that I trust what he's recommending, so I'm going to be forward.
Everybody else good? Okay. All right. Now we have a set date for public carrying for October 1st for consideration of plans and specs for the 2018 West Burlington agency intersection traffic signal detection. Mr. Teszner, do you have anything to say on that for you? Okay. All right. Brings us to discussion items. Number one, Partnering for the Future. Jay Hyke.
Good evening, Jason Hutchison, Greater Burlington Partnership. Today's about vision and long-term thinking, so I hope you're in the right context for that. Oh, he's checking the watch. That's not a good sign.
I'm just getting rid of someone's call so I can pay attention to you.
So the organization that I work for is charged with driving the economic prosperity agenda in our community, and it's a charge that we don't take lightly and we don't do this alone. We don't make the investments. Private individuals make those investments, but we help put the right factors in place to drive that forward. And economic development groups typically are funded by multi-year capital campaigns in which we go primarily to the private sector to secure funding to implement the strategy. And that's how the vast majority of economic development groups are funded across the nation, many of whom have about half their public support or half their financial support from public entities. That's not how we do things here. Most of those dollars are privately. But my predecessor back in 2008 put together something called Partnering for the Future. That's the identity that we call our five-year plan of work. And he really upped the game. He took the resources and the strategy and the expectation on economic development to an entirely new level. And in fact, I thought he was crazy at the time. I thought he was going to get us both fired because there was no way we were going to be able to achieve some of the results that he set out there. And it ended up being an incredible success. Many of our industries out there recapitalized and stabilized during that recessionary period and really set the stage for great growth, and I hope you've seen the progress in the community since then. Partnering for the Future Two then came around about five years ago, and there, again, a series of strategies designed to continue that great momentum that we saw coming out of the recession in our community. That campaign is going to take us through the end of 2018. And so we've spent the bulk of this year so far kind of crafting a strategy for the next five-year plan. And interesting to note, that'll be called Partnering for the Future Three. We're really creative at the partnership. But over this time of the last 10 years, we've seen 2,000 jobs either be created or retained on projects that the partnership played a role in. We don't take credit for everything that happens in this community, but for reporting purposes, we do aggregate those products where we played some sort of role in, in helping them to materialize in about 300 million dollars in private capital investment. So when you look at the attraction of capital to the community, I hope you would agree that there's been some success there. As we've put together the draft plan, there's kind of a process that we go through in terms of kind of put a draft together, and then we partner with an organization that's got expertise in filtering some of these things out. So with me is Paul Santiago with Convergent Nonprofit Solutions. We ran him ragged for a few weeks and had him have about 70 meetings with individuals. Then, since then, we've done three different roundtable discussions with our industry leaders, and we've done a number of meetings with a whole cross-section of folks to evaluate the draft plan and see where should we take this in the future. And this plan, it's going to have strategies in a wide variety of areas, but we're really pivoting to focus on talent development. And I'm sure you've heard all about the workforce crunch that we have here in southeast Iowa. It's really facing the nation, but we heard an awful lot about this. So Partnering for the Future Three is all about transforming the talent pipeline. And Jeremy, now, if you wouldn't mind, Jeremy Hess with our office, he's going to pass out the draft copy of that, of that plan.
Thank you, sir.
And so it's, you'll see that there's draft on it because we're still, we're still refining this. Feedback is still coming in on, on some of those strategies. And I don't think any document can cover every strategy that we want in this community, but it's the ones that our organization feels like we can get our arms around and help propel forward. So just real quick, I'm going to run through one or two strategies from each functional area, and then I'm going to spend the bulk of the time talking about this talent pipeline piece. But folks love the direction that Downtown Burlington is headed in in terms of its improvement. Of course, we had a recent setback here, but, but the overall momentum in Downtown Burlington is going in the right direction. I think we can focus a little more time and effort on some placemaking things within that to make the special areas even more special down there and really give people a sense that they've arrived when they enter certain areas in our downtown. On the visitor attraction front, we know that especially younger people are looking at one-of-a-kind, unique experiences. So yes, we're a great sports marketing destination community, but we also have some great natural resources. We also have some great, unique things about our community that if we assemble some packages for one-of-a-kind, unique visitor experiences, let's, let's say, for instance, it's a, it's a guided catfish fishing trip or something from a group of guys from some urban area wanting to just buy a package and come have a great weekend, or a date night special where someone gets a personally catered meal on top of a building in Downtown Burlington. These, these unique, one-of-a-kind things that you often will bid on at charity auctions, that's what we need to get our hands around here. That's how we continue to be relevant in the tourism industry in the future. From a community enhancement standpoint, you know as well as I do, we've got some challenges in some of our neighborhoods. They're, they're, they're sensitive areas. They need some investment. We've put together some strategies to help drive investment there. Leadership development is important for our community, increasing the capacity of the future leaders of this community. This is not, we're trying to replace all five people on city council, but this is, we're trying to make sure that we enhance that leadership pipeline. I think it's hard to have too many leaders in, in a community. And then also, we know that the private sector and we know the public sector can't do everything that we want to do. So we really have set out on a plan to build some endowed assets so that families and businesses who choose to put their money in a permanent place can, can support community initiatives well into the future. Take the Witty Foundation as an example, the great things that that's done. What if we had 25 of those or 30 of those, right? That's what we're thinking about here from growing that endowed asset pool. Finally, on economic development, some additional efforts in the entrepreneurial spirit and climate of our community, continuing to develop some of our assets for both industrial and commercial purposes in this community, and then, of course, the job attraction and the wealth generation strategies that we've deployed in the past. We want to keep doing those things because we've had success and it's headed in the right direction. But everything seems to be coming back to the talent piece, that we are at a limit, so to speak, as a community in terms of how we can grow, in terms of the new jobs that we can add, until as a community, we get our arms around the talent. Our schools are doing a great thing in, in trying to be more creative in how people learn. Our community college has invested millions in their campus to try to pump out additional employees for our employers, but those things are not enough. And so if you imagine a pipeline where we start talking about careers with, with kids in early elementary and we take that through to full employment, there's a whole continuum of strategies that as a community, we have to continually think of talent. How do we recruit talent here? How do we retain our talent here? How do we inspire our talent? Let me just give you three examples of things we're talking about. One is, we really celebrate it when our high school students sign a letter of intent to go play sports somewhere, right? That's, that's a thing that should be celebrated. We should also do the same thing when those high school juniors or seniors sign a letter of intent to enter a welding program at SCC and then go straight to work at one of our manufacturing plants in town. We should have the backgrounds. We should have the hardhouse. We should celebrate that, that it's, it's okay and it's cool, it's cool to do something other than play sports somewhere. We want to put that at equal level of importance. Another strategy that we're looking at as it relates to recruiting talent here is a pilot program with Iowa Student Loan Liquidity Corporation to, to put together a student loan repayment plan where for the first 36 months of someone's employment in our community, if they choose to come here and work, they can get a direct principal buydown on their student loan at a certain percent or a certain amount per month for the first 36 months, long enough so that they get integrated into the community and have sticky, but, but enough so that if they're evaluating opportunities in multiple communities and this, this Burlington area is really pursuing them and they're going to help me pay off my student loans, we think that that can add, that's another piece of this mix here. The other thing is illustrating that the, the value of thinking about retaining our talent. So we raise a lot of money for scholarships in this community and we, and we encourage people to pursue their education and spread their wings, and that's a wonderful thing to do. I wonder if we could look at redesigning it so we put extra emphasis and encouragement on those folks that are going to receive a local education. We're more likely to keep them in our community for, for the long term. And so not exclusive to that, but I just, I think we need to think about those things and, and not pay for somebody else's workforce, but, but continue to pay for our own. There are many more. I'm not going to go through them all. You've got the strategies in your, in your plan. We've put together a campaign cabinet to carry this message out and to do the fundraising associated with it. The cost to implement this plan of work is about $2 million over the next five years. And so certainly, we've got to go out and fundraise to do that. We think about 90% of that will come from the private sector. We would like to see our, our public sector partners be a part of that. Charlie Walsh with F and M Bank and Trust has graciously agreed to be our campaign chair, kind of the face of our campaign out in the community. And so I'm now going to turn it over to him. Charlie? I am. It's yours. The floor is yours.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Charles Elwals from Farmers and Merchants Bank. I like Jason said, I'm the chair of the Partner for the Future Three. Our goal is to raise, like he said, raise $2 million for our community, and we like to ask the city participate at $50,000 a year for a grand total of $75,000 for the total five-year period. The group went before the City of Burlington Economic Development Committee to review the draft and make the financial request. The committee passed that request unanimously. Committee suggested utilizing the Sales-TAC Economic Development Funds as a source to assist with this process.
You had me at hello. Oh, I guess that's the other guy.
I didn't want to be confused with the other Charlie in the audience.
The first round of Partnering for the Future, the city did participate, 50,000, 10,000 a year. The second five-year round, we did not. All three rounds, I think, well, the first two at least, I know City of West Des Moines, or West Des Moines, West Burlington, Des Moines County were both on board, and I assume that they were both going to be partners as moving forward this time, and it would make sense that we're a part of that effort this time around. The funding source is there and it's available to cover the request.
We appreciate it.
I think it's a fantastic idea. You know, that's right up my alley. So yeah, I'm excited to, to see how that helps Burlington move forward in the future.
We appreciate it. Thank you all for your help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
Santiago, how you doing? All right, good to see you. We're good?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Brings us to number two, the Jake Brake ordinance. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Bob Kraus. This is my wife, Vicki, and we live at 204 Arch Street here in Des Moines, just next to the freeway. And it's, we have invested in our home there. We've lived in Burlington for a grand sum of two years, about 400,000, including the purchase of the old orthodontic building and the remodeling of it. And we did it because, we came to Burlington because we fell in love with the view of the river. We fell in love with the view of the bridge, and we didn't fall in love with the noise in that area. And we're not the only ones. There is a dental clinic down there. There's a historic White House down there that includes the oldest building in Burlington, the back half of that building, if you're aware of that. And on the other side of the street, there's other people that are directly impacted. Now, I know a little bit about what I talk about. I was in the military. I was a truck company commander, so I know about big rigs. I also was a district planner for this area for the Iowa Department of Transportation when Brian Tapp was the executive director of the Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission during that era. It's a few years ago, and I retired from the DOT in 2008. But, and I think most of you, probably all of you at the table know what a Jake Brake is, but there may be some people in the audience that do not know, so I'll just briefly explain our problem. We've got, we're in the bottom of two hills. If you're going eastbound, you're coming down a fairly steep hill. If you're going westbound, you're coming down from the crest of the hill. So there's two, two... So, there's two slopes.
Happens all the time. Don't worry about it.
Two slopes coming together. And in both directions, the truckers that come down there like to jake break. And mechanically, there's nothing wrong with a jake break, or what they call a engine braking system, an engine brake. In a diesel engine, it's possible to, with a jake break, to downshift, and when you downshift, you press a certain button that opens up the valves at the top of the engine so that they're completely open as it turns. And that is why you get, when you're driving down the road, you'll see maybe a dark puff of smoke coming out of the stacks of that diesel engine. It's because those valves are open. And then, as you go downhill with, in a lower gear, the turning of the engine is actually what slows down the vehicle. You do not have to use your brakes. There is no safety advantage of a jake break, but what there is, is the mechanical wear and tear on the brakes, and that's why the truckers like them. But, they've got plenty of areas in rural areas where they can use the jake brakes all they want, doesn't make any difference. Now, as far as where we're at in that bottom slope, we're very similar to Dubuque, which has a jake break ordinance, somewhat similar to Keokuk, which has a jake break ordinance. I know other river towns have at least discussed them because we have that same problem. People are coming off a rise and down the hill, and in our area, it goes through some fairly expensive real estate here. And the city council here, you folks, approved that $26 million flood wall system. It's a great investment in our city. You've solved the flood, but we still have a flood of noise, and it's right around that area, and it will discourage economic development, and it will get larger because we know that once the four lane is complete from Monmouth to Burlington, which inevitably it will be, the amount of truck traffic on that road is going to increase, probably fairly dramatically as it, as the four lane begins to show up on Google Maps and MapQuest and those kinds of documents where truckers like that four-lane road going through. And we've got nothing against those truckers, but we do think that if you have too many of them in that corridor, it's going to get worse inevitably, the noise will, and that will detract from any economic development around that area. That's where the problem spot is for us. That's where I got most of my signatures. There may be other areas in town that have the same problem. But, it's, I know that when it was discussed earlier, the, there was concern about the cost of enforcement. And I think what we have is a situation where the truckers are basically honest people. They're like you, they're like me, they try to obey the laws regardless of whether or not they see a policeman. I think that if we put the signs up, that it will solve most of the problem. If there is a problem beyond that, you can look at it, you can repeal it, but I think if you put the signs up, regardless of if you do have people out there sitting and doing decibel meters or something like that, I don't think you're going to have to do that. I think you're going to get the major portion of it. So, those are my broad comments on it. If you have any questions, I'd love to take them.
Go ahead.
Well, I'll back you up a little, but I live on Fifth and Arch, or used to, and that's several blocks removed from the pitch, but you can still hear the jake break. So, I, you know, there was a big move afoot to put the quiet zone in for the trains, and that was a catalyst for development. So, I don't have a problem with putting the ordinance in. My only concern will be, is that as you go over the bridge, and I know this because I walk along Riverfront Park all the time, as those trucks are leaving Iowa and entering into Illinois, they're hitting the brake again. Now, that's a little further away, but we, you know, I think there's a question there because that's actually not our property.
Yeah.
Because they'll stop both ways coming to Iowa, but going to Illinois, you're still going to hear it.
Yeah, yeah, but it's, you know, it's halfway across the river.
It's further away, sure.
You know, I guess I'll have to go and talk to the Gulfport City Council, but not today.
My comment is, you brought up the jake break, so are you willing to make a noise to let us know what a jake break sounds like?
I don't know what it sounds like.
No.
Really?
Actually, that was pretty good.
So, is this a problem year-round, spring, summer, or fall, winter, or we'll see in this summer?
Right now, it's probably not quite as bad because the leaves are on the trees.
Okay.
And that acts as a partial block. When the leaves are gone and the ground is bare, it will be at its worst.
Okay.
When the leaves are gone and there's lots of snow, it won't be as bad because the snow acts as an insulator. And down the road, you know, there's other things that could be done mechanically. If you talk to the DOT, they've got those little noise batons that you can put up that do break the sound up some, but for now, I think a good start is just the jake break ordinance.
Yeah, I don't see any issue with that. You see them all along, you know, highways, interstates that cut through residential and, you know, commercial areas, so.
Yeah.
I don't see a problem with that.
Yeah, I think you're correct. I think most truckers are going to see the sign and they know they're not supposed to do it.
Yep. I mean, I was a heavy equipment operator and we traveled with our big trucks, and I remember saying, oh, there's the engine brake ordinance. I can't use my jake brakes, so.
As I've said before, my only concern was law enforcement. What's it going to distract from, the cost there? So, if they're okay with it, then I don't see a problem.
Yeah. Hey, I just want to tell you that we record all of these meetings, so, and we, and they're in the archives, so somebody will always go back and hear you make that jake break noise. I just want to let you know that.
Put it on the radio.
You got it, you got it. All right, we're good?
I think so. What would be the next, what would be our next step with that?
You have to have a set date for a public hearing. It wouldn't be this next time, but it would be at an upcoming council meeting.
Sounds good. Thank you for taking the time.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, brings us to number three, free swim days.
Brad Selby, our recreation manager here. We've gone through two seasons of having this free swim day. That was approved by council in September 2016, and want to give an update on where it's been and some of the pros and cons and other discussion items on it.
Again, I'm Brad Selby. I manage a pool. Some of the pros for swim day have an increased attendance and concession revenues on those days that the free swim has been sponsored. Definitely pool usage for those that may not have the means to use or come to the pool otherwise. It's guaranteed income for the city on days if the weather's questionable, so that's a nice perk. Also, it's a meal provided for those in attendance if they come before the opening. The South Hill neighborhood or the Gentlemen's Club has always served a meal. Some of the cons that we see, it costs the staff that day is higher. We have to, basically, all hands on deck, lifeguards and concession staff. Our rescues are up on those days. We have a lot of inexperienced or non-swimmers coming in that we're not necessarily familiar with it. We don't see them near as often as well. As the day goes on, we have some bad behavior, gets a little out of hand, you know, foul language, fighting, increased horseplay. I think kids are pushing their limit, see how long that they can hold on before we push them out of there, kick them out of there. And also, we, the perception, it does turn some families off as being too crowded or, you know, the behavior's maybe not quite what would be on a normal day. Also, the Gentlemen's Club, their numbers, they have also sponsored a swim for as long as I can remember, and they used to have 400 to 500 in attendance. Their numbers have been down a little bit of that. I don't know if the South Hill having so many has hurt that, or if it's just coincidence, but their numbers have turned it down on the last two years. And we're also seeing, I believe, a decrease in season pass sales. You know, is there an incentive to buy a season pass if there's already going to be seven days of, you know, free swimming where you're not going to have to pay to get in? So, our numbers have turned it down a little bit there. Some of the discussion items for you guys or to direct us, I guess, would be, you know, a rate was approved a couple of years ago. There was a limit of seven free swimming days at $600 per day. That is a full-day rental from 12:30, our normal opening time, till 6 o'clock. Those are reserved on a first-come, first-served basis. South Hill Neighborhood Association has sponsored six of them, and the Gentlemen's Club service group has done another one. We are looking, we've had some requests from the swim club to possibly book a weekend to have a swim meet where we would close the swim pool down. I guess we're kind of looking for some input on what you guys would think of that, yes, no, or does that compete with these other days? And also, some timeframe of the free day, you know, do we need to go from 12:30 to 6 that whole day? Would we shorten that down, maybe do three hours? And could we open back up for, you know, a daily-rate swim or do something different nature in that regard? And just, as we're, as you're looking or discussing the rates, whether you want them to stay the same, I think, Eric, we are up for about every two years where we revisit our daily-rate fees, whether there's an increase needed as well as an increase in season pass, so going along with that. So, after that, I just open up for questions or any discussion you might have.
What, on the, I'd like to get where, what you think, because you're right in the mix. On the, on the price, would you suggest that we go up on the price? And my thought on the, on the free swim, I hate to see it go completely away, but I realize the stress that it, you know, that having those seven free swim days, you know, I realize the issues that we've had that go along with having the swim days and having the amount of kids that we have in there. Is there any way that we can possibly, I like the idea of maybe not being from 12:30 to 6, you know, maybe we can make that, you know, from 12:30 to, for three hours, from 12:30 to 3:30, something like that is?
I would like to see it shortened. I would be okay with the rate, you know, staying the same, or maybe, you know, they may not think that's fair, but, you know, like a 12:30 to 4, I think would be sufficient, you know, in my opinion. I'm sure the staff would like that as well.
I like, I too like the idea of the reduced day. As a mother of two boys, let's test the lifeguard. I know how it gets for a long swim day. And I also like the idea of the swim club bringing in a tournament because I think that could potentially bring some revenue dollars to Burlington, so I like that idea as well.
Also, my other one was, what's your suggestion on the, I'd be willing to even cut back on the seven swim days to cut that down. I was, again, I would still like to have some. Sometimes you have to treat some things like Dairy Queen, you know, and make it more special, you know, I mean, I buy Dairy Queen because they're not open 24/7, and I think maybe, maybe we need to look at?
I guess my suggestion here would be coming forward with possibly the swim club looking at a swim meet. What I've been told so far is they would be looking at booking out a weekend, you know, would that be part of this number of seven? And if a swim club meet was allowed to be booked, you know, that would not be open swimming for the public, you know, where a free swim day is an open swim, you know, is that something that would be entertained? Would that be something as part of these seven events, you know, on that first-come, first-served basis? Would that be something separate?
How many weekends was the swim, was the swim club talking about for meets?
One weekend at this point, but it'd be a...
Just one meet?
One meet, one, but it'd be the whole weekend is my understanding, like a Friday night, Saturday and Sunday, or Saturday, Sunday rental.
I'm okay with the swim meet. I'd like to see it in addition to the seven days because, just keep in mind what those free seven days, the people that that's supposed to benefit are typically the people that aren't going to be able to either afford it. I know they provide transportation to some of those.
Yes.
I know a lot of different organizations, community organizations that help provide food and lunches, so I don't want to, I don't want to cut that day down. Also, I'd like to think that even if one kid out there learns how to swim because we let him into a pools for free day, for, free for seven days throughout the year, that it would improve upon that. So, I don't want to cut the days down. I am okay with adding an additional couple of days if necessary in order to allow for the meet.
Yeah, I guess I would weigh in. I'd be okay with the swim meet because I think that's, I think that could be a good economic benefit to the city as far as the merchants and the citizens, but, and I'm with Matt, I wouldn't want to see us reduce the amount of free swim days. I could, I would agree about reducing the hours, but quite honestly, those free swim days should be recruitment tool to get kids to come out there at Danforth more often. So, the way, the way I view it, so that, I'm, I would be for keeping the schedule as it is, but taking your suggestion on lowering the, or limiting the time.
Quick question on that. If you do that, how do you plan to implement that? If you've got a pool full of kids, are you going to shut the whole pool down and everybody get out and then we open it back up?
That would be how I would recommend doing it.
Or would you just close, for that day, you would just close, at 4:30, we'll just close the pool for the day?
Traditionally, our attendance later in the day has dropped off. I don't know that we'd have a lot coming at 4:30, you know. I would see us closing down, say we went 12:30 to 4, we close down. If we reopened at 4:30, I don't see us having a huge draw after, you know, everybody already had the chance to come, you know, we may have some, but traditionally, we don't have a lot of people come after 4 o'clock that didn't come to swim until 3:00.
I have less now.
Yes.
Right, I just think it would make more sense to close the pool at that time.
And after the pool bubble comes on, then we'll maybe add additional days. I don't know.
Well, the pool bubble will be down in the summer, though.
Yeah, it'll be down in the summer.
Oh, okay. Unless you wanted to do this free swim in the winter.
That will not be my problem at this point. That's the swim close problem.
My issue is, for me, what's listed here, the cons outweigh the pros, just because, you know, if there's bad behavior, that's really hard to, so I don't know what the fix for that, if it's lessening the time or lessening the days. I know it's an extremely important and vital thing that we do for the community, these free swim days, but how is there a way to maintain?
Personally, I would like to try shortening the day a little bit, you know, just to see how it goes. You know, obviously, we have behavior issues at the swimming pool, but I can see that trend as the day goes on, you know, about 4, 4:30, you know, all right, we're going to shut down, and maybe that changes to 2:30 if you shut down at 4, I don't know. But I think I'd be willing to try, you know, if on a recommendation to go three and a half or four hours or whatever you guys would think.
I'm okay with that.
I'm, again, I just want to say, I fought to keep the pool open, so you know, I'm all in the pool. That being said, yeah, I do realize that it's, you have to be out there, and I don't know if everybody's had a chance to go out there and be, you know, be out there when they have the free swim days, and it gets pretty brutal. It's tough, you know, and I just, to try to do something good, I don't want something bad to happen because we're trying to do something good, so I want to try to minimize those things as much as possible. Still want the kids to have fun, but yeah, I'm definitely, I think that would be a smart move to shorten the time. I think that would, I think that would help us out.
Yeah.
As Brad mentioned...
And if you have any other suggestions coming forward, you're in the mix, you know, if there's something that you, you feel like, hey, you know, this is something that we really, we really feel like we've got to have to keep this thing whole, you know, we trust you. Come back to us and let us know what you feel on that.
We'll probably bring fees and some modification to this this fall like we normally do. As Brad mentioned, just one of the things we looked at as well was the season passes. It wasn't in here, but for reference, in 2016, we had 108 season passes, and then in 2017 is 83, and 2018 is 62. We don't know if those are completely correlating, having the free days and our decrease in passes, but we do see that trend, and it happens to coincide with this. So, just wanted to pass that along. We have seen 40 fewer season passes over the last year.
Can you give us the numbers on what your rates were with 108, 83, and 62, so we can look at, so compare, compare some dollar volume?
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Hey, Brad, since you're down here, you do a fantastic job for us. I just want you to know that. Okay. Brings us to number five, South Riverfront Park land acquisition proposal from Riverfront Advisory Committee.
I'll just point out, 4 shouldn't have been on there.
Oh, okay.
That's my fault for not catching it, and the mayor has caught it. He is on top of things. I put on the request for, from the chamber for partnering for the future, and then Jason provided the title, and it got on twice, and I didn't catch it.
So, we're good to move to number five. Mr. Walsh?
The Walsh family setting you up?
He can always count on family to do you like that.
Charlie Walsh, chairman of the Riverfront for the city committee. I'm going to turn it over to Dave Weemer. Dave is the one who has designed this. He's been in recreation parks for probably 35 years, give or take. Probably more given than taken, but I'll let Dave present it to you.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Mr. Weemer?
I'm Dave Weemer, retired landscape...
I'm Dave Weemer, retired landscape architect, park planner, park designer, Park Foundation, everything with parks.
He wears a lot of hats.
Okay. On August 13th, our committee passed a resolution that we would come to the city council and make a recommendation. Page one in your book that I've given you, and I don't want to miss a beat, so I'm gonna... Okay, we come before you today to present a plan and make a recommendation. First, you have to, you've appointed the Riverfront Advisory Committee to review the riverfront and make recommendations to council. The committee sees the riverfront as the best, one of the best assets of the city. It has great potential, but alas, great unused potential. Personally, the public has but limited access to the river, but there is this one last hope. And before I get into that, I want to give you a little history. The two ladies on the council have not been brought up to date on this. First, the city deeded land and filling land out into the river back in 19, in 1858 and in 1880. And later than in 1983 and 84, the railroad wanted to charge the city for the south auditorium parking lot because the railroad owned it. But the city came back and said, well, you violated a deed restriction, so the deeds are null and void. But you know, the main line was going through the city. So, in 83 and 84, the city and the railroad got together, and the agreement came out that said land not used for railroad purposes should be returned to the city, deeded to Okay, the railroad then returned three tracts of land. They returned the south auditorium parking lot. They returned the north Rutherford building, which was, and the land around that, which... Okay, let me, let me show you up here. They returned the south Rutherford, they returned this piece of property here to the city. And they returned the, the south boat club property, which is now leased, the city owns it, and they lease it to Mattson Marine. Those are the two, those are the three they returned to the city. Okay. Next, our, our committee had researched going all the way back, and we put a lot of, a lot of effort in this 1985 agreement, which said unused land should be returned to the city. We felt that the land from, from here all the way down to the sewage plant was unused railroad land, because they had leased it to a client, and the client had built buildings or purchased buildings on it, and they were paying taxes on it. We thought we had a good, a good claim, and you passed a resolution to go to the railroad asking for that 10 acres. And the railroad came back and said, no, it is used for railroad purposes, we serve a client there. We thought that was a little outlandish, but the railroad came through and we lost. Now we come to the city, asking for this piece of property here from the railroad, which is not used for railroad purposes. It's leased to a client, but the client doesn't use it. The railroad doesn't use it. And I also discovered that the railroad owns a little piece of Market Street here. And if you look really close, the city paved this area in here, probably not knowing where the deed was, the, the limits of the deed. So basically, you're on railroad property here. Okay, therefore, I get to my number one. Therefore, the committee proposes a new riverfront park and presents a plan for the park to, for the city council for approval. It's a preliminary plan. It includes a shelter house, it includes a little recreation play equipment, and some senior exercise equipment, a little fire pit perhaps. The, the bike path can go through it, come back out, go in and come back out to Market Street and go south again, like the bike path was planned. And number two, but therefore, and to build a meaningful park, we need another acre of land, and this is that acre of land. We, we have a little less than an acre here, a little more than an acre here. We recommended the city council that it pass a resolution requesting from the railroad the return of approximately one acre of railroad land to the city, and it's next to that land that was returned in 85. And I went through this whole history, because the two ladies on council are probably not up to date, but John and Matt, and Eric and the city manager are all up to date because of our past recommendation. It is land next to railroad land retired to the city, and it's outlined in red. The criteria is that 1985 agreement, and it's in your book, so you can look at it later. Also, number three, the committee also requests that the council grant approval, that the committee work with staff and the railroad to describe that exact parcel of land. And we will seek donations to get that survey made, but we'll have to work with the railroad and staff to get the job done. Those are three items that we asked the council to consider, and you have a consent agenda. I don't know how we get on the consent agenda. Do we have to work with Eric and the manager to come up with the exact wording on something for the consent agenda?
For the consent agenda?
Well, you just went through a lot of items on your consent agenda that you will probably approve at your next meeting.
Both regular, you're, you're not going to probably have a resolution that's ready for next time, but you could, if, if you're wanting to move forward, we could have a resolution for the following meeting, which wouldn't be a problem. And the council could have that on either regular or a consent agenda.
It's, it's really not in a hurry. This thing is probably going to take 10 years to get done. I've worked the estimate out with Ryan, and we come to anywhere from 130,000 to 150,000 to get the job done, to make a complete park, so people can use it. We're going to ask for grants and donations and everything else to get the job done. We hope it won't cost the city anything, except maintenance.
Well...
And it's, it's done because the city of Burlington is a great place to live, work, and play. This is the play part of it. We hope you look with great favor with this request.
My only, I have, actually, probably not my only comment, but I would just give this comment, that, that working with the railroad, that we work delicately with them. I would just like to, to say that.
Well, let me go back one step further. First of all, we passed it in our committee. Then I went to the Parks and, the Parks Committee. They said, yes, it looks like a good idea. We were going to go to the land, the leaseholder, but he's been dead set against anything the city wants to do, so we didn't go to him. I went to the local railroad exec, and, oh, he said, next week I'm going to Fort Worth. And I said, I wish you wouldn't bring this up in Fort Worth. But I talked to him in church here a couple of weeks ago, and he said, well, they haven't said yes, they haven't said no. And if you're going to the railroad asking for a piece of land, or buying a piece of land, or whatever you're doing, we thought it would be good to put this one as well on the agenda, rather than try to go back to the railroad the second time. That's where we're coming from.
Yeah, that was going to be my question today, was has anybody had talked to the current tenant to see, because this looks like to me, like it's plenty far away from his operations.
Uh, yes, it's, it's unused, basically. I've talked to, the local man is Stan Lehman.
Okay.
I've talked to him, he works out of Galesburg, basically, but he covers this whole area. And as I say, he's, he's already brought it up down to Fort Worth, and, and he's come back to me and said, they haven't said yes, they haven't said no.
Yeah, what I, what I mean is the, the person that the, the railroad is leasing the ground to, has anybody talked to them yet?
No.
Okay, because to me, looking at, looking at your, your map, it looks to me like it's pretty far away from their operations.
It is.
It sure be great to get their blessing on. I realize that in the past, they've fought this, but this is a lot smaller piece than what I think they've been asked to do before.
Would you want me to go to them?
I would, I would think if you had that, it would make it easier to talk to the railroad.
James?
I don't know, I, I'm guessing.
We've, we've talked with the railroad some about it, too, and I don't know, Jason isn't here, so I don't know if, Jeremy, do you have any comments from an economic development perspective? But talking with Jason in the last couple of weeks, he thought that timing on this might be appropriate, that things are in at least a little bit more conducive space for this to be talked about as we move forward. Speaking with the railroad, and we've been negotiating with the railroad for over a year on the other piece of land. Just some thoughts from what they've talked about, and we've talked about some different options, whether to do an outright purchases there, of their land, the three tracts that are catty corner from the fire department, either an outright purchase or a land swap. They really want to have land in the downtown area, just for their long-term flexibility, just for what ifs. They don't have a specific identified need, but they like to have that flexibility. So for them, the, a land swap is way more desirous than doing an outright purchase, which, and we've talked with them about the Dresser-Rand site as, as being that. We've been having a frame of reference, and as you talk about 10 years, yeah, we've been talking for, on a monthly basis for well over a year, and are to a point where they're saying, yeah, we, we're interested in at least talking about this. There's a lot of favorability towards having this occur, we understand what you're trying to accomplish in the downtown, and although they don't like, they are not a fan of downtown housing adjacent to their tracts, they do recognize that there's already downtown housing, so they're, they're willing to have at least a discussion on this.
I'd like to.
During those discussions, we've also talked about this piece of land, and they're, they're willing to have some talk about that. One of the things that I did mention with them is I don't want this to be something that causes a distraction from our primary purpose for what we're coming here, but this is another piece that we would, whether it's part of this process, or as we move through this and, and on to another step, have this discussion about this land, and, and they've indicated they're willing to do it. And as I'm talking with someone, it's Andy Williams, who's the local government relations person, so it's a different person what you're talking about, but there, there is some willingness to have a discussion on this. And if you look at the piece of land here, a portion of this is under a parking lot and is under a roadway. That portion, I think, makes a whole, whole lot of sense for everyone to have a discussion about having a land transfer. It's the other piece that is a little bit more potential to make sure that we have everyone on board and are moving through, and as you talk about having a discussion with BRT, it, it makes sense to make sure that we're working through that as much as we can, too.
Right, I'm glad this was brought up, because I know Dave's worked quite a bit on this over the last couple of years. When I was in the Riverfront Advisory Committee, this was a constant topic of discussion. And when we started talking about this a few months ago, I remember I sat down with you and said, this was, this was the perfect time, and spoke with Eric briefly, and I know Jim and I have talked about this briefly. So, my, my original thought process was if we decided that we're going to do a land swap, that we would include this piece and the parking lot piece, and then they would get potentially the west side of the tracts over here along the, was it Osborne?
Old Dresser-Rand.
Old Dresser-Rand, the west side, not the east side. And I actually mapped, mapped them out on the GIS. Comparatively, the sizes are about the same, giving the west side and taking those two pieces of those two.
Well...
Though they like that other side.
Our committee is here to back this up, but I want to...
I mean, it's, I mean, it's really their preferred location to the other side.
And quite honestly, the, in, in my mind, what we're, what we'd like to swap for to the city, I think is more valuable than the Brownfield. I mean, Brownfield, we've talked about, okay, can we do a park there? Well, yeah, maybe a dog park. I'd much rather have a park on our greatest asset, on the riverfront, and, and then plus get, plus kill the, the other bird is, is the parking need that we're going to have with the components, so if we could swap that, I'd be all for it.
Even as, and as we talk about that other piece on the Dresser-Rand site, I know that Eric, you've talked through wanting to have, be able to have some level of ability to have a trail go through, and ideally, I think that's on the east side.
Yeah.
And we'd have to have some discussion with them, and also be sensitive, they don't want it adjacent to the tracts, and how do we make sure that you have a discussion in there that, that doesn't allow that to jeopardize an overall deal, too, but...
Understood. Yes, sir.
My passion is to leave Burlington a better place than what I found it.
I know this, my friend, I know this. Make no mistake about it, I know this. We recognize it, and we appreciate you, Mr. Weemer, all the hard work you put in.
But how do we get on a consent agenda, then, to have you pass this thing?
It won't be...
I don't think it'll be this next one, but it would be the following, following meeting. So, it, you'll see it as a discussion, as, on the next work session's agenda, it'll be a, would be a resolution.
There you go.
All right. I'll work, I'll work with staff if you want me to, to work that out.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dave.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes, sir. You talked about the chamber. I have a note here from Jason, and states here, the small piece makes a whole lot of sense to the chamber, so he is pursuing it, too. And, you know, this is an old game to me. I did that park from Marina to the bridge, and so you didn't want it. The only thing there, I had the newspaper behind me, and we built it.
So, are we going to call this the Walsh Park? Is that what this is going to be?
This goes to Weemer.
That's what I call the Riverfront Park now, it's the Riverfront Walsh Park. Quite honestly, that's what it should be, sir. I mean, it wouldn't have been done without you, so thank you again for doing that.
That's what I say, still, you, you just got to keep pushing. The railroad can be a friend and can be your enemy. And we live here, they don't, so be tough. Don't be the nice guy.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thanks, Charlie.
Thanks, Charlie.
And again, Mr. Weemer, we appreciate you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Before we close out, Mr. Tezlin?
Just to keep you up to date, we're still working on the Parkview Care Site. We got bid back for the sewer, we're talking with the property owner on amisment, so if we can get everything, we may try and add that at the following meeting, but if not, it'll be the meeting after.
Is that all you got?
Yep.
Peanut butter.
Something very exciting is going down at Memorial Auditorium this weekend, so you want to be there, I think 7:30, doors open, Bucket and Boards. This is the number one requested family act for Disney Cruise Line, so I think it's going to be really exciting. Check it out on their webpage.
What's it called?
Buckets and Boards, and it has absolutely nothing to do with basketball.
You can YouTube, it is pretty entertaining. There's, it's a lot like SpongeBob SquarePants, because most adults are going to think, I don't want to sit that, through that. There's a lot of adult jokes, along with a lot of kids entertainment, and what I mean adult jokes is they're, they, adults get it, so it's a really cool event.
Music, and singing, and instrumental, and percussion, and buckets and boards.
Buckets and boards, all right. Counselor?
That's all I have, love, love the weather after the rainstorms, it's beautiful out. Let's go.
MPT?
Um, just that heads up, on the 24th, I know that's not next Monday, but I will be gone. I'll remind you guys again.
We will miss you. Counselor?
Um, just FYI, the bees, if you haven't already seen, the bees did sign a two-year extension to their agreement with the Angels, so that was cool. Outside of that, join the upcoming fall weather and a couple Hawkeye victories.
All right.
Could be more than a couple.
And I think Notre Dame lost this weekend. James?
They did.
That'll be enough out of you.
Wow, I can't wait till they actually do lose.
I wanted to bring this up, I think it actually happened or occurred today. Traffic control is going to swap the movement of traffic right east of the Agency Roosevelt intersection, move it to the outside lane so that we can remove and repair the inside. The construction of this project in whole has kind of slowed with some utility work, so we've allowed the contractor to continue to move. It's not ideal to have the transition right at that intersection, but we at least will get this, we'll at least get the eastern, or the western portion of this we'll at least get the eastern, or the western portion of this completed. That way, it's opened up in time, and we'll have some more stacking, and that way, left-hand turns onto Roosevelt can occur earlier than had projected. So not ideal, but that's what we got working.
Does intersection's quicker because we're not dealing with the openings to the turn lanes as far as, to the private properties? So can we give the city maybe a little nugget that it might be a little quicker, once we're in the middle?
Be a little quicker.
A little quicker.
Mr. McGregor, do you have a twin brother that was wearing Hawkeye paraphernalia this weekend?
I saw him. He was at my tailgate location.
There is some pretty good Photoshop blackmail done out on the internet. Allegedly, I was wearing a Hawkeye shirt. I can neither confirm nor deny. I will leave that at that.
All right, before he starts really getting ugly.
Hey, that was a good Colorado Huskers game, too, by the way.
That was great, wasn't it?
What was the final on that? The Husker, or the Colorado won. I know, I saw that.
James?
They have a promising quarterback, though, the Huskers, too.
I've not heard more about their coach.
Tama Building, do you have an update on where we are right now?
I think next Friday, this Friday, the 14th, the building will be released back to the owner. I've had discussions with him on cleanup, had talked to the insurance company as well on the 10%, actually last Friday, the 10% retainage for demo reserve fund. So they're still having discussions with some of the claimants, and they're having a meeting Friday at 10:00 a.m., I think. But hopefully, early next week, they'll have everything sorted out on that, and be able to get us notice on our demo reserve fund, the 10% that we'll have, and then continue to work with the property owner on timely cleanup and his plans moving forward.
Slow, slow, but we are seeing some progress.
Boy, and just, he's gonna have to go pretty quick in order to be able to meet the deadline requirements for his-
Yes, six months from that date, we have a notice period that begins when, after the insurance company closes the procedure, their, their claim process, which is essentially gonna be this Friday, they have five days, and to do something, to provide us notice, and then we have six months to get stuff taken care of. But the bigger deal is, we have to get the streets opened up and make sure that's happening in a timely manner, and that's not a six-month delay.
Yeah, he's working with engineers on structural, and his discussion has still been to rebuild. But having structural on the building to see, and they're the ones that would make that determination whether it stays up or comes down. But regardless, getting the streets back open.
Has he given you any indication as to how long it'll be before he has that report?
He hasn't, I just talked to him Friday, and, or actually, last Thursday, and he's hoping to have him in the last week or beginning of this week.
So it'll be quick, I'm not gonna go there if you don't understand.
Deputy Chief Ryan? Would you like to talk about tomorrow morning?
What are you talking about, man?
Have you got the receipt, the box it came in?
Tomorrow, we are starting, well, you can start milling around before the time we start, but we're gonna be doing our annual 9/11 ceremony downtown. Ringing of the bells will be starting at 7:46 in the morning. We allotted for an hour for people to come in, visit, and do that, and go through the ceremony with us. We are putting up the aerial with the American flag out front, just like we normally do. Free to have anybody come on down and visit and participate with us, very good cause.
Well said.
Any questions?
No.
I hope to see everybody tomorrow.
Absolutely.
And then Nick will be on the radio on Wednesday morning.
Thank you, Nick. Just also, former Mayor Jim Davidson just had a birthday last week, happy birthday, Mr. Davidson. And also, we lost, and I didn't get the name before Kathleen left, but we just had a former council member that just passed away, and I forgot, I can't remember his name off the top of my head, but just saying condolences. Excuse me? I thought it was Dick.
Oh, yes, Richard.
Richard Eckhart.
Yeah.
That's it.
So to Richard's family, we sent our condolences, sorry for the loss of your loved one. Oh, and my sister had a birthday last week, happy birthday, Melinda. Okay, are we good to go?
I believe so.
All right, good night, everybody, thank you.
You're welcome, that birthday.